I would ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Sir. Tom Gashlin, Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. McGraw. Charles City County, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah.
Des Moines County, Vice Chair Carroll?
Yeah.
Ms. Haley. Richland County, Mr. Spoonhour?
Here.
Thank you. Hanover County, Mr. Peterson? Mr. Davis? Len Wright though County, Chair Morton? Ms. O'Bannon?
Here.
Houghton County, Mr. Byerly?
Here.
Mr. McClung? City of Richmond, Mayor Stony?
Here.
See him on the screen.
Thank you.
Here.
Dr. Newbell? House of Delegates, Delegate McQuinn?
Here.
Senate of Virginia, Senator McClellan? Commonwealth Transportation Board, Mr. Brown?
Here.
Thank you. ERPT, Mr. Rule?
Here.
Ms. Dubinsky? VDOT, Mr. Rich? Mr. Mann?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Riblet. Virginia Port Authority, Mr. Edwards? Ms. Vick? I believe Ms. Vick will be joining us. I'll check back with her. GRTC, Ms. Tim?
Present.
Ms. Adams? RMTA, Ms. Dean? Mr. Vice Chair, that concludes the roll call and we do have a forum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parsons, do we need to read a statement in reference to virtual?
We do have a virtual policy that's been in place for our number of, well, number of years. We are using the Zoom platform and people are able to participate remotely. There is a registration for the meeting so that you can participate. We have a Q and A function at the bottom of the screen for any members of the public who wish to submit questions during the meeting. We do have, for today's agenda, we have two public hearings that are set and we have had a 15-day public review period leading up to today. The deadline for submitting comments in advance was yesterday afternoon. And we do have, we'll get into the comments that were submitted in advance, but we do have an option for anybody participating live to submit questions and staff will be monitoring the platform to make sure we address questions that are submitted during the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Again, once again, welcome everyone. Welcome to everyone online. I hope everyone's having a great morning. I know it was a little brisk this morning, but it felt nice. We're going to move right into the agenda, so we have any consideration for any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I have one amendment to recommend. Staff would recommend removing item D2A, which is under the committee reports for the technical advisory committee discussing one particular project. The reason we recommend removing that item from the agenda is that it will be discussed actually during the public hearing in the overall consideration of the regional funding scenario.
Okay. The Chair, enter motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
That motion made, seconded to amend the agenda to remove item D1A, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. All in favor of the amendment to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes carry. And I guess we need to approve the tenders, well? So I would say the motion to approve the agenda, amend as amended.
Make motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. So moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Ayes carry. Thank you very much. We now need, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting? If so, if everyone's okay with the minutes from the last meeting? Move for approval. Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from the February, I'm sorry, from the March meeting, March 25th, 2022. All those in favor of approval, the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. One extension. You can make notation of that. Excellent. Thank you. Now we have an opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for the public, whether someone is here and present or someone who's online that may have a comment or to make a comment. Do we have anybody in the audience here? Do we have anybody online?
We have some online participants, but no one has indicated that they wish to comment.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to note that I think since the quorum was certified, Ms. Vick and Senator McClellan have joined. Just wanted to make note of that for everybody.
Welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. All right, just wanted to make sure. Excellent. All right, not seeing or hearing any other persons available or wanting to make public comment, we'll move on to item 4A. The Chairman's report. Again, one thing I will comment that Mr. Thornton and I did actually hold the first podcast the other day for the CVTA. It's in production right now, whatever that means. It should be ready for viewing on Wednesday. It is an opportunity that we welcome for all members of the CVTA to talk about their jurisdiction, to talk about their role in the CVTA and what their organization brings forward to the CVTA. And I was very enjoyable, I have to say, and I think we got a lot of good information as part of the broadcast and we look forward to sending it out. And again, I know that others, some others have expressed it and so if you get with me later, we'll make sure we can get you signed up for that. Moving forward, 4A, which is the appointment of the CVTA nominating committee members. There will be an actual request for this. The Chair has initiated the process forward for a nominating committee to be put together to nominate both the Chair and Vice Chair candidates for the CVTA and also the two alternate candidates or two additional candidates that serve on the Finance Committee. And then Mr. Hodges has been asked to chair that committee and I'm going to ask him to give us a little information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. As you outlined, the charges are to make recommendations regarding the next fiscal year. The committee recommendations that Chairman Thornton has shared with me, he would like to include or Dr. Cynthia Newbell and Mr. Michael Byerly on that nominating committee. And should this committee or this board approve the nominating committee, we would meet and hope to report back to the committee before you have to make a decision for the officers to take take their positions in July. So we're hoping to make a report in May and potentially June, depending on our schedule.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion from someone to approve the Chair's requested appointments of the nominating committee. But approval. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. The motion on the floor is to approve the Chairman's appointments for the nominating committee for 2022. And we'll do a voice vote on that, please.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Spoonhour?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. O'Bannon?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Mayor Stony?
Aye.
Delegate McQuinn?
Aye.
Senator McClellan?
Aye.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. That move, motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Thank you to the members of the CVTA who are going to serve on that committee. And I'm assuming that everybody else had already been notified that they agreed to it. If not, then I'm sorry, we disappointed you two in the committee.
I hope so, too.
You did not volunteer for it. We're now.
I'm good.
So I apologize. I should have checked, I guess, on that particular issue. I think next we're on the agenda is 4B, which is, I guess, I'll get staff to talk about the annual joint meeting invitation that's coming up.
Sure. Yes, sir. And everyone should have a flyer in front of you. We have extra copies and we will certainly send these out remotely. There will be the first ever joint meeting of Plan RBA, the Richmond Regional TPO and the CVTA on June 2nd. That is the regular meeting day of the TPO and invitations have been sent out, at least to save the date, from the Chairs of each of these three boards. The purpose of the meeting is to celebrate regional planning and collaboration. I think there's a lot to celebrate from this, these past few years, and this is a great opportunity to talk about aligning priorities of the three organizations, highlighting successes from the past year, and then talking a little bit about upcoming projects and ways that we can partner and move things forward. So please let staff know if you have any questions. The meeting will be held at the VDOT Richmond District Office in South Chesterfield and we look forward to getting into that brand new facility again and using the space to its fullest with all three boards in one room. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I want to say, I'll say thank you to Shane Mann for allowing us to come down to that facility. I think there are many members of the CVTA that have been down there for a meeting before and saw how technically advanced it is for the state, especially with the observation room, which I think it, how many TVs are in that room?
Thirty-some.
Thirty-some, 55-inch TVs on a massive wall with cameras that can monitor our traffic system all throughout the region, which I think is fantastic and certainly a great opportunity for members of the other committees to come and take a look at that building. So we thank you very much for agreeing to host that. 4C would be.
Chairman?
Yes?
Did I just ask a point of clarification? I know Plan RBA is canceling their June meeting because of this. Are we canceling our May or June meeting for the CVTA?
We had that discussion about whether or not we were going to cancel the June meeting. I think the discussion that came out of the, at least the discussion we had in the Finance Committee was to reschedule the June meeting because we have upcoming elections. We think we need to get some of those things taken care of and therefore probably still going to have the June meeting. Have we picked a date on that yet?
We have not picked a date for June. We are looking at continuing to hold the May meeting now.
Okay, so the May meeting is.
Oh, here's the May meeting. I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's the one we're replacing.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, what I would say is if for some reason anybody has any additional concerns about that, contact the Chair and voice your concerns and let them know if you have any issues or whether or not we should hold the meeting. Anything else? All right, 4C, public outreach?
Yes, sir. I think you had already shared about the podcast.
Yep.
That was the information.
Yep, good. Moving on. I think we'll move right along right quick this one. So now we're going to hold a public hearing for the 2023 CVTA Administrative and Operating Expense Budget, which is on page eight in your packet. We're going to open up to that.
Yes, sir. The FY '23 Revenue Projections and Budget for Administrative and Operating Expenses is up for discussion during this public hearing. As we shared earlier in the meeting, there was a 15-day public comment period held from April 13th through April 28th, where there was an opportunity for comments to be submitted. As of last night, when we tallied up everything, there were no public comments that we were aware of regarding the budget. We certainly are, by the nature of the public hearing, situated to take public comments today, if there are any. And then we do have an actual request of following the public comment period to hopefully adopt the operating.
So we're opening the public hearing up now for the public to comment and also for commissioners for comment. Not seeing or hearing any comment on the budget, then I will close the public hearing. It will be up for a motion for approval. Someone would like to make that motion?
Move the approval?
Move for approval?
Was that not recommended by the Finance Committee?
Actually, you're right, it was. It was actually recommended out from the Finance Committee, so now it's just up for a vote. We could have a roll call vote, please. Right, and you made the motion.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Spoonhour?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. O'Bannon?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Mayor Stony?
Aye.
Delegate McQuinn?
Aye.
Senator McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The second is a public hearing on Regional Draft Funding Scenario, which is on page 10 in your packet. This, too, was a recommendation for approval out of the Finance Committee. And you need somebody to figure it out if you were.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that and I'll certainly welcome any backup from the Tac Chair.
Good.
Before you today is a regional revenue draft funding scenario for fiscal years '23 to '26. Again, this was released for public comment from April 13th through April 28th. We did receive a significant number of comments regarding the revenue draft funding scenario. Fifty-four total comments. These were handed out today and we will have them available on the meeting page following the meeting for your information at a later date. I will note that I wanted to talk a little bit about the regional funding scenario, the background and what the request is, and then provide a little bit of understanding of the comments and what they might signify. So the regional funding scenario, this has been in the works for about six months now. It was an application process that was initiated back in the fall for all members, member jurisdictions to submit project applications to be considered for regional funding. The Tac and the Authority had approved a framework for consideration of projects that one, determined eligibility, if a project was eligible for regional funding. Two, was included a third-party verification of cost estimates to make sure that everything was reasonable and fit the guidelines. And then three, excuse me, developed a scoring and ranking procedure where staff could provide feedback to the Tac, the Finance Committee and this authority regarding how the projects compared to each other and what the implications are and where projects would stack up. So all of that was accomplished prior to the public hearing, the public comment period being initiated. We ended up with a total of, I believe it was 31 projects for consideration by the Authority that spanned eight of our nine jurisdictions and was fairly representative of the applications received back in the fall. So. Yes, ma'am. One of those, one of those projects was not recommended for funding and that is the I-64 widening project at this time. But the other, the other 30 projects that are recommended tally a total of 276 million, I believe, is the right number. And as I said, spans eight of our nine jurisdictions. We did receive a number of comments, and I guess one more detail on the funding recommendations. We followed, staff followed a very similar process to our other sub-allocated funds like RSTP and CMAC to recommend not only the amount of funding, but the year of expenditure based on where projects are in their in their queue at each jurisdiction or with VDOT in terms of when right away was necessary so that we are able to slot projects in as they're ready to come off the board. Basically, how shovel-ready a project is and we want it to identify funds that could be used in the most efficient means possible. That has been accomplished and was included in the draft funding scenario that was released on the 13th. We do have a, just a couple of quick additional details. We do have each year built-in a reserve so that CVTA is able to consider in future years any overruns that might be necessary to consider as projects are begun. A lot like we do with the other funding scenarios that are considered in the region. There, in addition, the Tac and Finance Committee did consider a total of five different scenarios. The one that was released on the 13th was the recommended scenario that Finance Committee ultimately decided was the best one to consider at this point. And so that comes with, as you mentioned, the recommendation finance, that that scenario be considered. Out of the public comments that were received, we had a total of 54 comments from all walks of life, residents, businesses, agencies that are partnering with us. I think it's a great, it's a great milepost for us to consider at this point, reading through the comments, because it speaks to the importance of the work that the CVTA is doing, but it also speaks to the work that we have left to do to talk about what the CVTA is for, what our purpose is, the types of projects that the CVTA provides, and how we can improve our operation as we, as we move forward into the next funding cycle and hopefully the long-term work that we do in the region. I think it also is great, it's a great indicator of the opportunities at the local level to use local CVTA dollars and identify other ways to get local projects moving forward. There's a lot of comments about bicycle pedestrian facilities, other types of improvements that could be considered at that, at the local level that don't qualify for regional funding. So I think, again, overall, the future of the CVTA is bright and I think we've got a lot of opportunity in the region to put money to good use.
Thank you, sir. And I'll open up the public meeting and what I would ask staff to do is make as part of the permanent record of the public meeting is the online portal comments that came in, so they should be incorporated in as part of the comments made in the public hearing. I'll open it up for floor for anybody remotely or in person for comment.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Hodges?
Public hearing for the public.
Yes, yes, yes.
Never mind, I'll reserve my.
I'm going to, when I close the meeting, I'm going to open it back up for discussions.
Thank you.
In the video chat, is there somebody?
That's why I asked if there's anybody online. If they're commissioners, when we, when I close the public meeting, then we'll open it up for full discussion once there's a motion on the floor. Not seeing or hearing any public, other public discussion, I will now close the public meeting. And there is a motion for approval from the Finance Committee. It's the motion on the floor here. Open it up for discussion.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, Mr. Parsons, if you mentioned it. I think the scoring is fair and the projects listed based on the criteria that was used. I didn't know if that, those criteria will be reviewed at some point in the future. At the appropriate time, Mr. Chair.
Well, we, I still need a motion to open for approval of the
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other recommendations.
No, I mean, Finance Committee's recommendation is the motion.
That's right.
So this is a discussion now.
Yep. Perfect answer.
Mr. Chair, yes, Mr. Hodges raises a great point. I think that starting this month at the next meeting of the CVTA-TAC, we'll certainly, we have been keeping track of adjustments that we might want to consider for the scoring framework and the guidelines and I think that Tac is in a good position to consider those adjustments in advance of the next funding cycle.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners, either online or in present?
Mr. Vice Chair? So everybody knew I was going to speak today. So good morning. I looked at the scenario, so my question becomes, if it's approved today, is this a scenario that will change or is this a scenario that will last from three to four years? And then the entire scenario will change? Or is this like another scenario that we got at our TPO meeting where projects stay on and when money becomes available, then you go back eight and 10 years and fund a project?
So we want to bring, well, there's a couple of ways to look at this. And so we bring someone from the Tac up. We'll give the technical answer first.
Thank you.
And we'll talk about what the code allows for.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair. Yes, good question, Ms. Page. This will be a yearly process, so it will be iterative every year. So while this is an allocation of four years of funding, there is a money going to be in contingent, as we discussed, but also some of the projects will have other funding sources. So if those projects get other funding sources, then the money that is being allocated for the project on this list will go back to the, back to the budget. So every year we will come back, see how much money there is, see which projects either need more money or don't need money and revisit yearly.
Okay, so thank you for that explanation. So I'm here to tell you that in New Kent, we need some money. We are no longer I-64 widening. Now, in the Virginia Pilot, we have become the I-64 gap. And it has become, as I look at the scoring, the safety and all other meanings other than the financing of it, the I-64 widening gap is rated number one. It's very disheartening to me and to my, the residents. When, for us, we wake up and I-64 is on the news at 4:30 in the morning. In Charles City, you can chime in, 4:30 in the morning because we have accidents. We never witnessed that. I mean, we were never on a traffic report in the morning. But now we're on the traffic report. Now it's no longer, and thank you for widening to exit 205, but so now we're at exit 220, we're at exit 214. And so I cannot reiterate enough the impact that I-64 has on, and I love the new trailers that the Port of Virginia has, the teal color. However, they run I-64 east and west to get to the port in Norfolk, Virginia. New Kent was fortunate enough to get one of the largest warehouses that AutoZone will probably ever build. However, what difference does it make if we cannot get their product into exit 211? if we cannot get their product into exit 211? Which is one of our interstate exchanges that was absolutely created for industry. So that's one part. The other part of it becomes, when we talk about safety, we had a case that we were fortunate enough to give VCU ER in New Kent County at exit 205. Because of the interstate traffic, they had to med back somebody from 205 downtown because we couldn't get from 205. 205, which is the exit where the widening started. We can't get there to downtown Richmond. So we got to med back a person because of the interstate. We have a burden on Route 249, which is a secondary road. And that burden has become, if you live in New Kent and you get off at 205 to Route 249, pass our administrative building. If Interstate 64 is backed up, you know, because the traffic is lined up on the secondary roads because the GPS, or whatever you call it these days, ascending traffic to a secondary road, which was created, which was a wagon road. Anybody old as I am know a wagon road, not created for anything but the residents to try to get to the next road so we can get out of the county. It is absolutely, it's absolutely a safety. We have our seniors, we have our students that are on that road driving. Now we have 64 traffic that every, every week, we have traffic that's deferred to Route 249. A VDOT maintained road that the shoulders of the roads are crumbling, that we have low-bearing trees. A country road, that's what it is. Never meant for the amount of traffic, the tractor trailers, and the traffic that is deferred to that road. I am encouraged because we will review the funding scenario. I'm encouraged. I'm encouraged because it's in plain view. We were ranked number one. So I'm happy about being number one. But just to see that it is important, we just don't have the money. And I want you to know, I get it. I get it. But I never wanted to be lost that as a rule in a small jurisdiction that we matter. And it's my job as border supervisor in New Kent County to always keep that on the forefront of the minds of every organization that I sit on and I represent. And I'll speak to you too, Charles City. Charles City is my next-door neighbor. And they need some help too, because they got to come over to Route 60, and they got to get out of Charles City County. You know, they got the beautiful bike trail over there on Route 5. But at the end of the day, it still becomes, if you got to go to Richmond, you're going to come over to 64. And it is essential with the amount of money that we're going to have to spend to increase our fire and rescue for 64. It impacts that economic development in New Kent County, as well as Charles City, and as well as some of your jurisdictions. And Hampton Roads has also spoke in support of widening the I-64 gap. And so I'm grateful for legislative to create the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. However, we cannot continue to wait years and years and years and years because the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. And so I would ask us to be creative about how we're going to fund. And we're going to close 29 miles.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
I was hoping you would.
Well, I apologize for not being there, unfortunately. COVID has caught up with me. And I did miss this last month's Finance Committee meeting because I had some other commitments. But I've been waiting for these scenarios for quite a bit of time. And I guess I need to be educated about the way that we've treated 64 here. I'm looking at the scenario here, and I see there's a bond, there's a bond for scenario that's listed in the package on page 10, where there is an allocation of $96 million. But then I'm also hearing Mr. Parsons say that we decided that we're not including 64 in any of the funding scenarios. And so can you clarify that for me?
That is correct. That was not one of the scenarios that was reported out of the Senate, I'm sorry, the CBTAs Finance Committee meeting, unfortunately, that you missed.
Right. So, and just to elaborate, there were several discussions that were held, especially in light of the fall line trail, where there were some CTV dollars that were either available for 64 or they could have been allocated to help complete the fall line trail. And there were some conversations that we had that if we were to allocate those dollars to the fall line trail, that 64 would not be forgotten when we created our final scenario. And it seems that that's not what happened here. I just want to make sure I understand that because, you know, decisions have consequences. I just want to make sure I understand that.
Good.
Mr. Vice Chair, in the Finance Committee, I should point out, and I'll let Mr. Yur's here, because we were very aware of Ms. Page's concerns. And we actually brought that up, that we would be hearing from Ms. Page to develop on the funding. But we also spoke to, Mr. Yur spoke to the efforts that starts in building up the funds we need for bonding of the I-64 improvements. Mr. Yur, would you, if it's okay?
That's fine.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Peterson. So yeah, both at the TAC meeting as well as Finance Committee, there was much discussion on 64 and the timing of when funding is needed for that, how much funding is needed. And the scenario that actually ultimately came from TAC through Finance was basically a concept that helps keep powder dry for bonding over the next few years. So the scenario, which is a PEGO 4 with less reserve for the first two years, because as we know, we are sitting on a fairly large amount of funding right now that will be allocated to Fall Line Trail. But it's money that basically can't be spent until the trail project is ready. As well as the plan I made earlier, that a number of the projects that are on this list for allocation may ultimately not need the money based on whether they get funded through smart scale, whether they get funded through other funding sources. So we anticipate coming back over the next year as well as the following year with a fairly large amount of funding available to allocate and to leverage against bonding. And that will be when, I think, the discussion on the bigger projects that will benefit from bonding, such as 64, you know, those projects will be ready for discussion and allocations at that point.
Okay, so I'm going to try to translate that into lay speech. So are you saying that, unlike the CTV six-year plan, which is static, meaning you commit to funding the projects and those projects get those dollars and are funded? What you're saying here is that if funding is otherwise found through other means, whether it be the TAP or the Smart Scale or the revenue sharing that those products would come off and then those dollars would come back to the CBTAs regional pot. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, Mr. Brown. In addition, as you know, there's a lot of projects on this list that are being used to leverage Smart Scale. I can speak to Henrico Project. They had eight applications. Four of those applications are leveraging funding from other sources. So if we go through the Smart Scale process and the projects do not score and are not recommended for funding through Smart Scale, then many of those project dollars would also come back into the project. So yes, it's not a static document that locks us in for four years and utilizes all of this funding necessarily.
So let me explain the challenge I think we're going to have here. And as a CTV member, I think I can say this. Because we didn't allocate, and I had a conversation with the Secretary just a couple of weeks ago about 64 funding the gap, Ms. Page. And he was very optimistic that with some of the additional resources from federal sources and otherwise, and with the commitment of the CBTAs, that we could get that done. Of course, the process is that you go into the Smart Scale process. And as the theory of the case behind the CBTAs is that the CBTAs would be able to bring local dollars to buy down expensive projects so that you could leverage Smart Scale dollars in ways that were not done. And, you know, Chairwoman McQuinn heard that theory as she was carrying that legislation. The fact that we did not make an allocation of 64 means that those dollars will not be available to buy down the project in the Smart Scale round, which means that 64 itself will not compete as well in the Smart Scale round, which means there wouldn't be a do loop. So I can't support this scenario. And I'm quite frankly disappointed that we would do this because it's the whole raft mouth for pushing for the adoption of the CBTAs was to be able to better position the region to compete for big thing in the Smart Scale round. And our failure to do that here defeats the theory in the raft now for the CBTAs' existence. So I'm with Ms. Page. It's not an issue, Ms. Page, that we don't have the dollars. We've just made decisions not to allocate those dollars in a way that would be most beneficial for some of the most tenacious challenges that we have in the region. And I would ask that my colleagues seriously consider whether or not we are being wise in doing that because the federal dollars, as well as the State Smart Scale round that we will have, the state's round, will be the largest that we've ever seen. And if we miss that opportunity, we will miss it. So I share this with this group with the LVA before, that we sometimes can be our own worst enemy in positioning the region for progress and success and leveraging state dollars. So if we fail to put 64 on this list and allocate any funding, either bonded or otherwise, and it is perspective, because Mr. Yur is correct. 64 is not going to go in the next two to three years. There's work that must be done. But if there is no dollars that can be shown to be allocated to 64 when we go into Smart Scale, then 64 won't happen, and it will not be able to compete. But I have had very significant conversations with the administration that suggest that if we were to put that $96 million to $100 million on 64 over the course of the next six to eight years of this plan, then we can get 64 done. So the decision we make today will determine whether or not 64 happens in the next four years or the next decade.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Del.
Good morning to everyone. I agree with Carlos and Ms. Page in terms of their concerns about 64. I too had some conversations during the General Assembly period with administration and with others about 64. And even though, you know, as we look at 64, the loudest voice is Mrs. Page, which I totally appreciate. 64 represents all of us. We are, we are all a part of that because of the traveling back and forth. One of the things that I talked with them, and Mrs. Page sort of alluded to that this morning when I talked to the administration during General Assembly session, I said that if something happens in eastern part of Virginia Beach, you know, any of those areas down there, and they have to get out there quick, fast, in a hurry, we're going to have a serious problem with that 29 miles that have not been addressed. I just think it is imperative that we give the attention that is necessary to help secure the funds, whether it's federal, state, local, but these collective funds to make it happen. We cannot continue to put it on hold, and we can certainly not wait another decade to have this done and have this for the service of not just New Kent County or Charles City, but for all of us who are traveling, you know, that traveling 64. So I would hope that we would regroup, go back to the drawing board, look at this, and see how we could make this a priority. Again, not just for Ms. Page. And I thank Ms. Page for, when, if I'm in a fight, I want her on my team. I want you to know that. But this is for the benefit of certainly the Commonwealth, but for those who'll be traveling back and forth on 64 for safety reasons, for just people getting, you know, to their destination, you know? And so I would hope that we, again, revisit this particular issue and see how we could make it work. We do whatever we want. We figure it all out. I think that this is one of those things that demand our attention and demand to be on the priority list. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I second everything that Del McQuinn and Mr. Brown have said.
Thank you. I have a question. Is there any money in the budget for the 64 widening? There was some discussion that we heard of last year that there may be some dollars set aside from the surplus to also be put forward for that.
Well, as you know, we don't have a budget yet. Off the top of my head, I do not remember whether that was in the Senate budget. I will see if I can track that down while we're in this discussion. But as you know, there's a $3 billion difference between the House and Senate budgets. And the Congresses have not gotten beyond the decision on revenue to begin talking about spending. But I will check right now during this discussion to see if it's in Senate budget.
Thank you. How about the House, Del McQuinn?
Let me, let me go back to the drawing board. I mean, drawing board. Let me go back and look. I did have, again, have some discussions about it. So let me look, and I'll get back with you as well. Thank you. Do you know Carlos?
Yeah, I know. What I will tell you is that there were active discussions as late as two weeks ago. I got a call from the Secretary. We had a very engaged conversation about that, where dollars from HR TAC, as well as some additional funding opportunities that the Secretary and the Governor's Office had been working. I'm not sure if it was going to be directly designated in the budget for 64 or otherwise. But he made it very clear to me, we need the CBTAs to come at around $100 million to make it work. And I guess I have a question to Mr. Yur and Mr. Parsons. Based upon the way that you described the process, Mr. Yur, if we were to allocate $100 million to 64 in the scenario, either PEGO or as a potential bond at some future date, the fact that we designate those dollars in that way would not bind the CBTAs to spend those dollars and would not restrict our ability to spend those dollars. But it would allow, it would allow New Kent or whoever the sponsor is with the Smart Scale application to say the CBTAs allocated it. And if, of course, the project is not otherwise funded, then there's no harm in writing foul. But the failure to include it eliminates the ability for any sponsor of an application on 64 to leverage that. So I guess what I would suggest is, well, first, I'll let you answer that question, and then I'll make my next statement.
So, okay, I'll go on that, Mr. Brown. So, yes, with the $100 million request for 64 widening, that would have, just based on the cumulative project list and the amount of dollars requested, that would have put us into a bonding scenario for this round, which would be very much limiting on our ability to be flexible for the next several years or beyond as once we were tied up with bonding. So the discussions at both TAC and Finance were, if we go PEGO for now, then we have that flexibility over the next year and the following year for leveraging much more money through bonding and through the additional revenues coming in. So you are correct that with this approach, we will miss this round on Smart Scale. But we also... uh, we also are aware that there's other funding sources that in those conversations still need to occur between CBTA, between the state on, you know, what's the schedule? What's the, what's the full funding scenario for sixty-four widening so we know when that money needs to be committed? Is it, is it next year or is it in an out year that we can come back next year and, and, and be in the position to, to commit a hundred million or whatever that amount is?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chair, one, one other point to that, um, is that when the I sixty-four project was considered as one of the applications, it was in consideration of a full four hundred million dollar cost, which is why, as Ms. Page said, the benefit is high, but the cost benefit is low based on that estimate. I think if there was more clarity in terms of other commitments or, or funding resources that, that were able to be considered as part of this, this first process, we would be able to, you know, maybe provide different information and, and discussion points for the, for the authority.
Mr. Chair, yes, I just talked to the Director of, um, Appropriations and her words were definitely money is in the budget for sixty-four. Yes, so we do have money there. I, she's going to get back with me in terms of how much, uh, but, uh, and then even though it hasn't been closed yet, uh, in terms of, you know, the budget being improved and whatnot, from my understanding, uh, Senator, that it's in, uh, in the Senate budget as well. I, from, okay.
Yeah, I think it was in the introduced budget and I know it wasn't removed on the Senate side.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I would, I'm, I'm asking for advice, is Mr. Main, Man in the meeting?
You, I was getting ready to ask the same question, so go ahead. He's here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you enlighten the, 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 the mission on kind of what some of the conversations are about sixty-four and, and, um, you know, my understanding is that we need about three to four hundred million dollars, which is significantly less than what the total project costs, but that three to four hundred million of found dollars, which can be found by the CBTA, HR TAC, and some other funding that we would identify at VDOT, would be able to leverage potentially the remainder of the project. But can you speak to the most recent conversations that you're able to?
Yes, sir. I was with the Secretary and the Commissioner last night, and this was actually a discussion point, the, the gap on, on sixty-four, as the Secretary calls it, the straw. Um, like you said, I think those numbers are correct. Three to four hundred million dollars is, is what we need to come up with through, through CBTA, HR TAC, or, or, or what other mechanisms we have outside of, of state funding. Those are the numbers we need to have, and that was accurate as of last night. Is that the information you're looking for, sir?
Yes, sir. So, so then I'm going to push this back to Mr. You're and Mr. Parsons. I, I understand, and again, the, the, the way that the smart scale process works frequently is that a, a group may say, look, the product is seven hundred million. We're, we, we are only asking for four hundred million. In this case, I think the application that, uh, New Kent submitted was a four hundred million dollar project, uh, uh, application, if I'm recalling correctly. What, what I am asking is, is there a way that would be fiscally responsible where we could, uh, include in our funding scenario a hundred million dollars? Again, I don't think, Mr. Man, we would need that in twenty-three or twenty-four, but, but a hundred million dollars that that would be available, let's say post twenty-four, um, that in the event that the product was selected from smart scale otherwise funded, we could either via pay-go or bonding, uh, have those dollars available. Is there a, a, a methodology to do that?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Brown, I, I think there certainly is. That was, there's, there were two scenarios that were considered by the TAC and Finance that, that did include that funding. It does impact other projects. So, uh, it, it would be touchy to, to take action on that today, to be honest. Uh, I thi- I think if, if it was the authority's, uh, recommendation to consider I sixty-four funding, it would make a lot of sense to, to put that back in front of TAC and Finance to come up with a revised recommendation. But, uh, yes, to answer your question, it is possible.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, so there is a hundred and ninety million dollars in fiscal year twenty-two for the between New Kent and James City County. Um, I, I do think for all the reasons that we have discussed, that we need to take another look at that and would move that we have, um, the Finance Committee and, um, and TAC take another look at this to propose some funding for the widening of sixty-four.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yes. I, I second.
So the motion is made. Uh, can you clarify your motion, please?
Uh, revisit the, um, proposal to include and bring it back to us to include some funding for, um, the widening of sixty-four between New Kent and James City County.
Motion's on the floor to send it back to the TAC for review. Now we have a second. Discussion on the motion. She did second it, so open for discussion on the motion.
I'll just speak. I'm sorry, go ahead.
But I'm, Chair, I say, I, I know, after the discussion today, I think it is very appropriate that we take a second look at this and ask, with an alternative scenario. I'm not saying throw out what we've got, but I think we need to look at, particularly knowing that we're not looking at four hundred million, but spot, much smaller amount than was thought of initially.
And Mr. Chair, I want to be very clear. It is, it is absolutely my reality that it won't be four hundred million dollars. That's not what I'm asking, but I am asking for the opportunity to revisit this and look at it. And, um, and so that is my, uh, that is my recourse.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? My question is, so what are we revisiting? Are we revisiting the question on bonding or, because we talk about some funding, some funding could be one million dollars or a hundred million dollars. So I, I need to be more clear about what, what are we revisiting?
It's a good question, and I would say that if we're trying to revisit this.
Or are we going to?
Uh, it's a good question, uh, Mayor, and I would say that if we were going to have to revisit this, that's exactly what would have to be looked at in order to be able to, um, you know, generate the funds to not only fund the projects that are on the available list today, but also sixty-four. And it would require, um, us to speak with our financial advisor, uh, and to find out how all of that would work. Um, so yeah, that is, I believe that's part of what the discussion would have to be.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, to, to, to Mayor Stony's question, all I think that we are suggesting collectively, those of us that have, uh, you know, state level responsibilities, is that we, uh, imagine scenarios where your project funding list, the projects that are funded on this list today can still be there, but that we can, uh, uh, formulately demonstrate a commitment to sixty-four, very similar to the way that we did the fall line trail. If you recall that scenario, the CBTA gave me a letter and said, Carlos, we are going to commit before we have a funding scenario, before we've done our analysis, that we're going to fund at, and I forget the number, Mr. Parsons, two hundred million dollars for the fall line trail. And you said, take this to the CTV and go get some more money, leverage our dollars. And Mr. Smiley, I was smiling because he remembers that. And I said, I will do that because it's about bringing dollars back to this region. And what I am asking of this group today is to do the same thing for sixty-four. If we can spend a hundred and bring back six hundred million more to the Richmond region, how dare we not do that? So the, so the motion is to refer this back to the, to the TAC and to ask them to use their creativity to develop a scenario that does not commit or tie up or obligate a hundred million dollars since it burdens the projects that are currently listed, but that creates a scenario that allows you to take the letter, the piece of paper, and go to the state and the CTV and bring back more money.
And I want my money.
What is the, if I could ask, what is the, um, if you could, for the committee and for those probably watching, what's the timetable for submission on smart scale? Mr. You're.
Applications are due in August, yeah.
Okay, so I, I guess my question, and I certainly think this is something that needs to come back with, at least with, um, for Mr. Thornton to have some consideration because the chair is not here today. But my thought process is if we talked about this in Finance Committee, and that is that if, and, and if we were to approve the list today as it is, there, there would be nothing that would stop us from coming back, uh, between now and the next meeting, having the conversation that, uh, Mr. Brown is talking about, and if necessary, talk with the financial advisor, uh, and come back and say, we're going to amend what we voted on today to include this. There's nothing that would prohibit us from doing that. Ask legal counsel.
Mr. Chair?
I've got a question for legal counsel first. Yes?
There would be no provision.
Okay, and that's the flexibility that was added into the legislation that gives us the ability to go back and look at this and go, uh, we can change this.
Well, Chair, can I, let me ask the inverse question. Is there any reason why we have to approve this list today if we know that we're going to have to come back and amend it? What, what is the rush of adopting this today in April if we have until August to submit something for smart scale?
Uh, I'm not saying that there is. I was just asking, uh, if there was, what the deadline was and what it would look like if we did vote today and if we changed it.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, and I guess another point, you know, if we take this back to the commit, to the, to TAC, you know, we will likely have a budget or at least a good idea of what will be in the budget on the transportation side by the time of our next meeting. If my math is correct, uh, we're looking at rather than a almost four hundred million dollar request, you know, about a two hundred and six million dollar request. And again, we're not asking the entire thing be funded by CBTA. We're asking that CBTA show enough of a commitment to leverage additional dollars.
Good. Uh, one, one point of clarification, uh, I think that if we, i- if, if the authority decided that it wasn't ready to take action today and that TAC came back with a revised funding scenario, which might include different projects, we would have to re-advertise and do a public hearing again. Doesn't limit anything. I mean, we would have fifteen days between now and the next meeting to have that done.
I still think we have enough time.
Mr. Chair, allow.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on one second, Mr. Peterson.
Just talking to Mr. You're, You're on the side here. If we're going to do this, the cost of the timing, I would suggest we reinstate our May meeting and have it done for May.
We, we are not, we never did aware of the May meeting.
I thought we just said earlier that the May meeting was moving into the, uh, June second.
We'll, we'll take, we'll take advisement from the authority and schedule whatever is necessary.
And, uh, because I think to push, to push this off till the end of June.
Oh, I, I agree. Delegate McQuinn?
That, that's all I was just wanting to say, that I think we should move, uh, expeditiously in reviewing, but need to be reviewed, uh, in light of timing, uh, so that, um, that the very next meeting or that we could, you know, uh, have at least have it amended, addressed or whatever needs to be done, so. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Uh, do roll call on the motion, uh, that's on the floor, please.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carroll?
Nay.
One second. This is the motion to delay.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Spoon Howard? Mr. Peterson? Ms. O'Bannon? Ms. Page? Mr. Byerly? Mayor Stony? Delegate McQuinn?
Aye.
Senator McClellan?
Aye.
And Mr. Brown? Thank you, the motion passes.
Mr. Atkins?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that motion a weighted motion?
It is, one, just one second. I'm sorry, I have, um, if, if you don't mind, I would like to redo that because I had a problem with my spreadsheet here. Can we just do Mr. Hodges again?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carroll? Mr. Spoon Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. O'Bannon? Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Mayor Stony?
Aye.
Delegate McQuinn?
Aye.
Senator McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. The, the motion passes with the weighted votes, there are eighteen yay and eight nay. No?
It's a no.
The population.
Population has to be calculated.
I'm sorry, that's right. Yeah, that is the.
It did not meet the four-fifths, sorry, I was turning it off with you this time. It did not meet the four-fifths population voting yes. So it, it passed three of our checks, but not all four, so it failed.
So appeal to the, to the parliamentarian, uh, is the weighted vote requirement procedural as well as substantive? Because I would think that it, and man, that I helped to write the legislation, I, I don't think it was intended to be done on procedural votes such as motions to, to, uh, submit to committees or, or lay on the table or what have you, but it was designed to be done on substantive issues. So I'm, I'm curious as to why the assumption is that it would apply to procedural issues. This is the motion to refer to committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, if I may, the, uh, the statute does not distinguish, Mr. Brown, between substantive votes versus procedural votes. It just says decisions.
What I would say is that at this point is also that the, you know, this was a recommendation that came out of the Finance Committee, but it does require, um, as, as I've been, um, reminded by legal counsel, it does require, um, a motion to, for, in any type of motion, uh, from, from the floor here to consider the motion that came out of the Finance Committee. Is that correct?
It requires a motion, it does not require a second.
Okay, and we have not received the motion as of yet?
That's correct. And if there is no motion, then the matter is not properly considered and it would lay on the table.
Until which time it could be, um, brought back before the, the, the group, right?
Yes, sir.
So I guess the question now is, is there a motion?
Mr. 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 Chair?
Yes.
My memory is hazy these days, but I thought we had a motion in a second to move into discussion.
We did, but we, we technically didn't actually have a motion to, to approve, uh, the, the recommendation for the Finance Committee.
Right, and, and just a appeal to the, again, a question to the Chair, the parliamentarian. So a no vote on the main motion would effectively, uh, have the same result as, as Senator McCollum's motion, which is the Finance Committee's recommendation would not be adopted and it would later have to come back to the table. So just to be clear, that, that would be the result of a no vote, correct?
Essentially, yes. Um, but what would be lacking, uh, Mr. Chairman, would be direction to, uh, to send the matter back to TAC and Finance for further review. So if, if you want. So if you want to direct Tac and Finance to take another look at the scenario and develop another alternative scenario, a motion would be preferred. If no action is taking on this matter, then it just lays on the table as is without any further action. So if the body wishes to revisit the scenario and come up and direct staff in the Finance Committee to conduct further work on this, to develop an alternative scenario consistent with the discussion, then I would suggest a motion to that effect should occur.
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's the motion we just voted on.
It is, that's correct.
So if I moved that we accept the, as the plan is written from the Finance Committee, but who is the Finance Committee?
You want?
So if I make a motion, then we vote on this?
Yes. That's correct.
Make a motion to approve the regional draft funding scenario as presented.
Thank you, so I move that we accept the regional, or the draft regional plan as presented.
Motion is made to accept the draft as presented, and it does not require a second roll call vote.
Mr. Hodges.
We have discussion.
Oh, sorry.
We're saying, we're saying this is a draft, is that correct?
Or approving the draft.
Approving the draft, recommended by the Finance Committee.
Recommended by the committee. And you don't need a second committee.
This is trickery.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to the main motion?
Certainly.
I'm going to keep my comments short, because we, I think, dealt with substantive issues earlier. I think it's short sighted for us to do this. I would ask that all my colleagues vote no on the main motion. Have this go back to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee then can make, take such action as to make sure that we're adequately representing the entirety of the region. This is a regional body that's supposed to be doing big things, thinking about big things. And I think there's no, it is of no cost, no consequence for us to take 30 additional days to think about how we can bring literally a half billion dollars to the region to help improve one of our motivation issues. So I'd ask that my colleagues vote no.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe, you know, as I was following some of the discussion, it was stated that we can amend the plan moving forward, correct?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we can amend the plan moving forward, it seems to me that I-64 will not be included in this scenario. I was very aware of the votes that were cast in the previous motion. I think that we need to consider, since approvals likely here, a ad hoc committee of some sort to review the potential of I-64 moving forward. I mean, I'm going to part with my friend, Mr. Brown, and I'm going to vote for the approval of this, but I ask that we create an ad hoc committee to consider I-64, because I do believe this is a regional project, obviously, and nine jurisdictions involved here. And right now, we have a pay gap scenario on the table, and I think that we should probably study it further.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes.
No disrespect to the mayor, or in the members of how you feel about this. However, all of us as a region came into this so that, with my understanding, so that we can have funds to leverage opposition in smart scale. The smallest of the jurisdictions also agreed. I have been, New Kent has been a team player with the understanding that we are one of the smallest, but we've been a team player and a supporter of CVTA and the motions and the directions upon which this organization is traveling. My ask, my ask is to vote no on this motion, and go back, instead of doing a redo and spending the time in the redo or coming back at a later date, just go back with this and then come back to the table with what you find. We haven't, we have until August, we said we can get it done by May. That is my ask. And that's my ask, not just for New Kent and Charleston, that's my ask for Hampton Roads Tac. That's my ask for those that are trying to get out of the peninsula. If we have a hurricane, we are the hurricane evac route. That's my ask for the businesses that are beyond New Kent County and James City County. That's my ask for the economic development that will affect not only the eastern part, but the western part and the northern part. That will affect the Richmans and the Chesterfields and the Henrichos and the Gooselets. That's my ask, that on this motion, we vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I can't for the life of me understand why we would vote on a recommendation that we know is not going to be the final recommendation. This vote sends a signal that we are either serious and committed to widening 64, or we're not. This is not just a decision affecting the smaller locale. This has broader implications long term for the region. 64 is a bottleneck that affects economic development and trade. The cargo from the port of Virginia needs to get through Richmond and this region. Tourists need to get through 64 into this region. And it makes no sense to adopt a plan or a proposal that you know you're going to have to change just for a month. And that's why I intend to vote no and ask colleagues to do the same.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm going to violate my other commitment about not speaking twice on this. And I'm going to say, we won't get an amendment passed, because the individuals that have expressed an objection to the motion.
I'd like to call for the question, I really need to leave.
To refer, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, I have a floor. The individuals that opposed the amendment to simply, to refer to committee will never vote for an individual paper that would adopt a 64 scenario by itself. So because of the weighted voting, any of the jurisdictions individually can vote no and kill in action. And so therefore, it is unlikely that 64 will be able to be amended and added to the scenario subsequently if it is by itself. And folks need to understand that, so again, I will.
Question to call for. I'm quick with the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hodges.
Nay.
Mr. Atkins.
Nay.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Spoon Howard.
Nay.
Mr. Peterson.
Nay.
Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Nay.
Mr. Byerly.
Nay.
Mayor Stony.
Aye.
Delegate McQuinn.
Nay.
Senator McClellan.
No.
And Mr. Brown.
Nay.
What's happened, where does that leave us?
Failed. Wait a minute, it's a majority.
No, okay.
It has to pass all four criteria.
So failed, it'll pass.
Failed.
Failed, okay.
Can we please explain that?
May I make a motion now, that this board sends, instructs Tac and the Finance Committee to take a look at an additional alternative to go with this and bring it back to our committee at our next meeting. I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, can someone please explain how the last motion passed or failed? Actually, I heard some mutterings in the background, but I think we should know what the percentage was, please, thank you.
Yes, sir, there are four criteria that are set in the legislation. One is that there is a requirement for a simple majority of the weighted votes in the affirmative for a motion to pass. We did not meet that criteria. For the simple majority in the affirmative.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Peterson, what's your motion?
My motion is that this board instruct Tac and the Finance Committee to review an additional scenario and bring it back to the next meeting of this board.
Okay, and I second that.
I'm not saying do away with this.
Right.
Bring an additional.
Additional scenario. Mr. Mayor, are you good with that as the Chair of Finance?
I'm good with it.
Okay, very good. Call for the question.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Vice Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Spoon Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Ms. O'Bannon. I'm sorry, I see that she's left. Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Mayor Stony.
Aye.
Delegate McQuinn.
Aye.
Senator McClellan.
Aye.
And Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Wait, now the tabulation. Should carry.
Yes.
Okay, do we still have a quorum with Ms. O'Bannon leaving?
We have a quorum.
With everybody else, we should.
Chad, if you wouldn't mind looking at this with me, what I'm coming up with. It says that we have the quorum present, we have the weighted vote, simple majority, but it says the four-fifths population in affirmative has failed. And I would imagine that Ms. O'Bannon's absence would have caused that.
Well, I think, and I actually think, we're right back where we started, and that is that, quite frankly, this matter still sits before the Finance Committee. And I don't think there's anything wrong with the Finance Committee scheduling a meeting and discussing this matter further. And the mayor has said that as the Chair of the Finance Committee, he's willing to do that. Mr. Peterson's willing to do that on finance, I'm willing to do that. So I don't think there's anything wrong with, we're back where we started, it's more finance, and we should have the latitude to do this.
Yes.
So, all right, move forward. It is now for Finance Committee updates. Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, today's Finance Committee report will be short for me, as many of the relevant items have already begun, been brought before the body already today. I did want to take a moment to be clear that the next item that's up for discussion regarding the amendment to the bylaws was not fully discussed by the Finance Committee. But it was brought up, or at least mentioned as an idea, as it relates to increasing the number of authority members on the Finance Committee. I think to provide some clarity, the entire voting membership of the authority stands at 12 members. This amendment is suggesting that more than half of the authority members be on the Finance Committee. While I do understand that some members would say this change may represent inclusiveness, to have not been properly discussed before the Finance Committee to increase the committee's membership without a thorough discussion seems a tad bit hasty. So as the Finance Committee Chair, I think it's also worth understanding if our current bylaws allow for our current ex-official members the ability to provide fiduciary input on the Finance Committee as the bylaws are written today, as well as with our new CEO coming on board, with will the CEO be an ex-official member of the Finance Committee is a question. And in these cases, I believe that there might be an additional bylaw amendment conversation that should take place for our consideration as a committee. So while I understand that amendments to the bylaws shall be presented in writing and read for a first time at a regular meeting of the authority, I do ask the board to consider my comments here. And Mr. Gregory, I will hand it off to you now to discuss the aforementioned topic, but as well as the additional amendment under consideration to add a Capitol Regional Airport Commission representative as a non-voting member to the authority. Mr. Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mayor Stony is exactly right. The bylaw amendment topic on the agenda should really be an A and a B in terms of the fact that the, one of the proposed amendments before you to add the Capitol, the CEO of the Capitol Region Airport Commission is really just an administrative matter in order to get the bylaws in compliance with legislation which was approved by the General Assembly and signed by the governor. So that's, that's sort of A, and that's non-controversial, and that's a statutory compliance matter. The second, more substantive matter to add the additional two members to the Finance Committee was presented in concept by Mr. Peterson in the Finance Committee at their last meeting. And with the nominating committee now in effect in the election and appointment process going forward, staff was, took that as a, it would be a good idea to put that before the body as a way to, if, if the body chose to go forward with that, you could do it in a timely manner so as to do those appointments in conjunction with the nominating committee, which was approved earlier this morning. So that's the only reason it's couched as it is, but it's certainly, that, that particular amendment is more of a discussion item, as Mr. Stony mentioned. And not, I mean, you can, if the body chooses to move forward with it, you could treat it as such, as the first reading, but certainly don't, don't have to, it's up to the body to make that determination.
Does anybody have anything else? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no, I have nothing else on the Finance Committee report, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I think the one amendment to the bylaws which includes the Capitol Region Airport Commission representative, I think that's something we could go forward with. But now I'm not sure if we, with the weighted voting, if with Ms. O'Bannon gone, I don't know that we can necessarily approve it. So we may have to wait to the next meeting to bring that up anyway.
Do we still have the forum without, I mean, what messed us up last time? Were we still can curers being here?
We missed the four-fifths population.
Right, so I think we probably have, I guess, since we're not going to have the votes actually to do it, we'll have to just tamper that discussion till the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, on the second part of that, I think we should tell this board a little bit more about what happened in Finance. Basically, when I brought this forward, it was simply a case of that we were looking at it. I brought it forward as an idea for people to consider as to try and give the smaller jurisdictions some more voice within the Finance Committee. The, I mean, there was a very light discussion of that, but we did instruct staff to tell us what the bylaw changes would have to be if we, if this board were to choose to go forward. And I think they did accomplish that. It may have been couched wrong in the agenda, but I think they did exactly what we told them to do, other than just how we put it out here. And that was, that's the whole concept in a nutshell. Without getting in any extensive discussion, it was a matter of looking at, being able to provide a little bit more, more voice for the smaller jurisdictions.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with Mr. Peterson, but it is wrong on the agenda. And so I appreciate that the staff did everything they could, but the agenda is incorrect, and, you know, I, that's why I had to say what I had to say.
I appreciate the comments, I think it's important to at least bring it forward. We couldn't vote on it anyway, but it's good. What I would say to the commissioners is if you're in favor of having that bylaws amendment added, then I would reach out to the Chair, Mr. Thornton, between now and the next meeting, and voice your thoughts on that. And I will let... And I will let Mr. Spoonhour give us a, I guess we have a TAC update? Is that right? From the working group?
I think update on the fall.
You don't want me, you don't want me to give the TAC update?
No, I don't think so. It would be interesting, though.
So very briefly, TAC update is regarding fall line trail and the working group. It's a subcommittee of the TAC. We are meeting next Wednesday. We're working through the consultant team to develop the design guidelines. We have consistency throughout the length of the trail as well as working on the standard project agreements for the two bundled project segments, north and south, that W. D. Arnold is working on. In my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Spoonhour, does anybody have any questions on the TAC report? Mr. Spoonhour?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since I am remote, I'm going to let Ms. Page give the update because she's in the room, and I think it would be easier for everybody to hear and everything like that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. On the personnel committee, we put together several things that we wanted to update CVTA on, and one of the things is that we have advertised for Executive Director for CVTA. Recruitment began on March the 1st, and the deadline was March 31st, 2022. We used different resources of advertisement for the position as Executive Director, including the Richmond Times Dispatch. We used the Microsoft Long recruitment ad, also went through different, excuse me, went through VA site for it. We went through many forums to include the American Society of Civil Engineers. We did the National Institute of Transportation Engineers, the Virginia Menopoeic, the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, and so, and the list goes on. And we did it at minimum cost to this, to this organization. All five of the localities did agree to post positions on their websites, and that was done. Through our outreach of trying to find a candidate for this position, we received 21 responses, and these represented the states of Florida, Georgia, Maryland, Ohio, Texas, and Virginia. So we had a wide geographic range. They were screened into three groups, which we are calling tiers, and we're using tiers one through three. The first interviews will be completed by Friday, May the 13th. Also, we have, we drafted interview questions to be used for the first round of interviews, and we plan to come back to the full board in June with top candidate recommendation.
Excellent.
And I want to again, think not only supervisor Spoonhour for his organization of this, but also to our HR roundtable for their time and dedication to getting us an executive director.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you. Will the interviews be open to the other CVTA members or just the select group?
Right now, at the request of the Chair, we are doing the, just the select group and some of the HR roundtable, and then we've been instructed to bring back the final one or two candidates for potentially further interviews. And what I'd like to, I'd like to just kind of talk for a quick second. Thank you, Ms. Page, for the update. I reviewed all 21 applications in depth, and I started with tier three, which was the lowest tier. We decided to move forward with tier one. And as I was going through tier three, I kept thinking to myself, my gosh, I can't wait to see what's in tier two because all these candidates in tier three, most of them looked really good. And as was the case, tier two was like, oh, my goodness, and then tier one, I'm like, we're going to have a great executive director. So very, very rich pool of candidates. And again, I echo Ms. Page, the HR roundtable is just a phenomenal group, and if you ever get a chance to work with them, I highly recommend it because they're great. So thank you very much. That's our report.
Thank you for the report. Looking at the next item of business, it's the CVTA meeting schedule, and I think that, again, we can't vote on it, so I think we'll have a, one thing we'll have to push out is a proposed meeting date for May.
Yes, we will, staff will work with everybody.
So we will make sure that staff works with all the commissioners to get a meeting date scheduled in May so we can take action on the other things we need to take action on. And then the last item.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I do apologize. I just want to say, for everyone's expectations, I think we'll do our best to accommodate that, but given the actions that were taken today and the sequence of the committee meetings that need to occur and the notice requirements, we just would ask that staff be given latitude to schedule that meeting as soon as possible to meet those notice requirements.
That's fine.
It may not happen in May, just counting the dates.
Right.
So we just wanted to put everyone on notice of that.
Okay. Well, it is time sensitive, so if we have to meet sooner than later, that's fine.
Understood.
I think the last order of business, and certainly we could get an update on this, but we're not going to be able to have a motion to approve it because we don't have the four fifths. So I will leave it up to you. If you want to give an update now, you can, Mr. Timbs, or you could do it at the next meeting.
I do have staff to do that, but I would recommend we defer.
Okay, that's fine. That being said, that brings us to the end of the scheduled business. I would ask any other CVTA members if they have any comments at this time. Let me say this. Today's votes, I know, were concerning, but I will say the actual legislation worked. The way the process was supposed to work, the way the voting is supposed to work, it actually did its job. And so I think that moving forward, we'll be able to work with our financial advisor, with the TAC, with the Finance Committee, and come forward with something quicker as a consideration. I think that I would express to my members of the General Assembly to please try to do your best to keep the funding for 64 in the budget, both in the House and the Senate side. I think that if that stays in there, then it kind of puts an urgency on us to try and do something as well. That being said, if no other commissioners have any comments, then I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Everybody else have the same?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be, I'll be.